Thank you. And we can go back to our presentation. Thank you very much. So today's agenda, we will introduce the research team as well as the larger, you know, project team members. We will also present to you the study. We will also talk briefly about the Cerro Mac study. We will invite you for questions and answer, and there will be a poll and evaluation at the end. Now, I'd like to quickly go and speak on the acknowledgement as we normally do before we start hanging off our session. So, for land acknowledgement, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather though virtually on this land. And we thank the generations of indigenous people who have taken care of this land long before other nation groups came. In particular, we acknowledge the traditional territories of the Ojibwe, the Anishnaab, and the Mississauga of the New Credit, whose territory is covered by the upper Canada treaties. We also recognize the contributions of the Merees, Inuit, First Nations, and other indigenous peoples have made in shaping and threatening this province and this country as a whole. We also need to continuously educate ourselves about the colonial history of this country and understand how the wrongdoing of the past still impacts the present and the future. As such, I encourage everyone at this town hall to actively seek information and take action. And on this note, we will go to the next slide and provide to you the research team members. Dr. Alan Cobby is the principal investigator. For this study, we have Dr. Susan Williams and myself as co-investigators. And we have Dr. Optin Hallen and Dr. Isaac Adami as scientific advisory group members. We also have joining us today, part of our larger group, we have Nidhi Avarasti, who is who will handle all things that media related, and we have Fisola Olagira, along with Sandra Newton that is now present today, they will support our focus group and questionnaire dissemination as part of the larger study responsibilities. Thank you. On this note, I will pass this on to Dr. Melanie Corby Allen to present to you more about this research study. Thank you. Dr. Corby.
Thank you, Lanri, and thank you, everyone, for attending and welcome to the meeting. And it gives me great pleasure to present to you this evening. So we start by, what is, we're talking about vaccine hesitancy. Sorry, before I start, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that September is sickle cell awareness month. And so there are many activities for this month that will be, I'm sure, at the end of this, Lanri will will talk about. Vaccine hesitancy refers to delay in acceptance or refusal despite availability of vaccine services for the community, for communities. Vaccine hesitancy is complex and context is specific, varying across time, place, and vaccine. So, what might be seen as a reason for refusing vaccines here in Toronto might not be a reason in Quebec, for example. It is influenced by factors such as complacency, convenience, and confidence. So, the Public Health, Public Health Canada has funded this study, and this we appreciate from them. Funding the study, I just want to, currently in Ontario, there's a high level of hesitancy among people affected by sickle cell disease and within the black population generally within that communities. This is a number of reasons which we're trying to understand so that we can encourage more people to be vaccinated. As this, we see this is very important to, for particularly our patients with sickle cell disease, but generally for the black population. The primary goal of this project is to understand the reasons for hesitancy or refusal within the black community and sickle cell community. Once we can understand the reasons for hesitancy or refusal, then we can work to improve vaccination knowledge within the community and try to increase vaccine uptake. So the study itself is trying to understand the reasons for hesitancy and refusal in those who are hesitant and refuse, but also to understand those who have been vaccinated, to learn from them, what were the reasons that, what made them go and get vaccinated. So we can try and understand the overall thoughts around vaccinations, particularly with COVID, but also other vaccines too. Next one? Next one, thank you. The design of this study, it's, we have a survey which will be done online or in person, or in person or through telephone. It's a series of questions which try to capture fact, why people refuse vaccines and also learn from those who accepted the vaccine. It's going to be, it's in both in English and French to cover our population. And it's also, we also having a number of focus groups for, and we try to separate these focus groups by age and by age groups and try to understand from, from, from these people in person to the focus group, what sorts of themes would come out as to why people are hesitant. And then, again, at the end of this, we hope to be able to improve on vaccinations down the road. But the study itself is understanding vaccine hesitancy within the community. So both a focus group and a survey, the surveys will be done online or in person or with, with someone, depends on people's preferences. And the focus groups are likely to be in person or as a small group on, on a Zoom platform or a virtual platform. We have a number of collaborators within, who, within Ontario and across Canada, and we hope to have, have their support by, for example, the African Canadian Social Development Fund, council, the French community, and any number of advocacy or community groups we, we hope to be collaborating with. Based on the results of this study, of the focus group and the survey after analysis, then when that's completed, then we hope to be able to, as a result of this, develop vaccine education and uptake tools to increase uptake within the community. So the, we have REB approval, so the Research Ethics Board at Sick Kids has given us approval for this study. We, it was initiated with Public Health Agency of Canada funding. Once we had the funding, we put together the study with a group of people, have everybody's input, and, and then we, it went through a number of scientific review, reviews, two scientific reviews here at Sick Kids, and then further on to the ethics approval, which we got in August. So we're now ready to get started, having full REB approval, Research Ethics Board approval. So, people who, we would like to participate, anyone identifying as being black or African ancestry, anyone who has sickle cell disease, a parent of children with sickle cell disease over the age of five, where vaccines are now licensed over the age of five, and anybody able to communicate in English and French. So people of black ancestry identifying as black without, without sickle cell disease and parents of children over the age of five who have sickle cell disease, who are able to communicate in English or French. The recruitment, we hope to start this month in September, now that we have the REB approval for participants in the, in participants of this study, we will be able to offer a $25 token of appreciation. It is not, should not be seen as compensation for your time. It's a token of appreciation for participating. This is all voluntary, voluntary participation, and it's to help our broader community with what we, what we gain from this project. If you're interested, and we hope everybody on is interested, and we'll tell all their, all their colleagues, friends, and family, you can reach us through Skago at this number. If you have questions specific about the study, you can reach me at this number, seven six oh six extension here, and or email research@sicklecellanemia.ca for any, any specific questions. Any questions around the, the study itself, you can reach me, questions around how do you, how do you participate in this study? You can get them answered through email, research@sicklecellanemia.ca. The Skago website will have the information on it, and we encourage everyone to go to the Skago website and or sign up for the newsletter. Skago has a newsletter, which is not just only for the study, it's with lots of information about sickle cell disease and activities that are ongoing. So this is a poster that you will see on the website, and just for your, your information, a little bit about information about COVID vaccine, and you can come, go on the website to complete the online survey or reach out to one of our team members if you want to do it by telephone or online virtually. If, if you depend on how comfortable you are online with the online surveys, it would be pretty easy. When you go on, you will have to sign a consent form to participate. So it's voluntary participation. So you consent to participate, and then once you have signed that you consented to participate, it will, you will be taken to the questionnaire. And then if you, at the end of the questionnaire, there's a question of whether you're interested in being part of the focus group, or you can register for being part of the focus group, which is, which is separate. Just in terms of just general research, this is all, this is all voluntary. For patients with sickle cell disease, if you don't participate, this will not affect your care in any way. It is totally voluntary. And we're open for questions. Thank you.
I'll stop sharing. Thank you so much, Dr. Corby, for that presentation run through of the study. I wanted to give the floor now to Dr. Optin Hallen to speak briefly on the Cerro Mac study, and then we would take question and answer on both together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Lanri. Can you see my slides? Okay, great. So I'll just spend a few minutes just to talk about the Cerro Mac Vaccine Response Project. Now, more broadly speaking, the Cerro Mac Vaccine Response Project looks at antibody responses to the COVID vaccines among people of African ancestry in Canada. Now, the sickle cell part of it represents one component of the work that we're doing. When we talk about vaccine responses, there are three subcomponents. The first is to look at antibody responses to see how well the vaccines take. In other words, when somebody gets vaccinated, does their immune system respond to the vaccines in a way that protects them from severe COVID? Second is another form of immune testing that looks more at how the white blood cells fight against COVID. And the third is vaccine side effects. And so when we enroll people in this project and they have previously been vaccinated, we will be able to capture information regarding whether or not they had any significant side effects from the vaccines that they had received. And you'll see posters like this one that speaks more broadly to the Vaccine Response Project. And most, if not all of the posters, will have a barcode that you can scan, and you will get to a site that will provide more information. With respect to the sickle cell study, more specifically, you'll see a barcode there that if you scan it, it'll take you to the site. In fact, I tried it and it worked. We're focused on individuals who are 18 years and younger who have, have or will be getting their COVID-related vaccines. And essentially, the process involves informed consent. We'll ask some questions, and then a blood test is done. I'd like to say a little bit about the blood testing because people often get concerned about this. First thing is the volume of blood that is taken. The amount of blood that is taken is supposed to be safe for a baby of a few months of age. So, and it's the same amount of take from a child or even an older individual, but it's actually safe for a baby of a few months of age. A second point is with respect to any pain associated with blood testing. We can use a spray if needed to really minimize the discomfort associated with blood testing. An important point is that we will provide results back to participants. So at the end of the day, if you got vaccinated and you got tested, we can let you know how well your immune system responded to the vaccine in terms of production of antibodies, going on the assumption that the higher the antibody levels are, the more likely there would be protective. And so with that, Lanri, I'll stop. And then, as with Dr. Kirby's presentation, I'm happy to take questions when you're ready to do so.
Thank you very much, Dr. Optin Hallen. And I think I saw one question in the Q and A, but I'm encouraging everyone on this call today, if you have questions either on Dr. Melanie Corby Hallen's presentation or Dr. Optin Hallen's presentation, please put it either in the chat box or in the Q and A, or raise your hand, whichever way we will get to you. So I'll go on the first question. So someone is asking if we can please share again how people can access the link for the Vaccine Hesitancy Study. So, me hi, just, okay, I will share, but I just wanted to mention that we don't have the questionnaire up yet, and we don't, and we, and we've not started to recruit. We will start to do that shortly, so there is no link to actually go and complete a questionnaire at this point. And there is no link to actually sign up at this time. But what Dr. Corby has shared with us, and I will share my, I will share the slide again, that would be towards the, right here. What Dr. Corby has shared with us is that if you want to, if you have questions after today about this study, you can reach her at four one six eight one three seven six oh six, or you can email skago@research@sicklecellanemia.ca. So if you keep handy the email address, Dr. Corby's phone number, or if you receive Skago's newsletter, you will be able to then receive the link to actually do this study once that is out. So we just want you to keep these numbers and this contact information handy for when we have the actual recruitment, sorry, we have the actual survey out. Okay, I hope that answered that question.
If you could also periodically check the, the Skago website, you, you also see when, when it's up.
Thank you. That's a very good point, Dr. Melanie Corby Allen. If you also check the websites, you will also see. So, I think in about a week to two, we should be able to have this up. We are working on that. And please sign up with a newsletter. You'll be able to, Nidhi, can you kindly put in the, in the chat the newsletter subscription link for people as well? Now, I see another question in the chart. So we have someone from Nigeria asking how can they participate in this work because they're from Nigeria? And I will open that to both Dr. Hallen and Dr. Hallen to advise how they can be part of.
The, both projects, as I understand them, are only for individuals who are residing in Canada. And so folks who are not residing in Canada wouldn't be eligible to participate. That said, with respect to the study that I presented, looking at antibody responses, we do have other related projects that are running that could potentially include individuals out of, who are resident outside of Canada. But for the moment, the projects are really focused on individuals who are resident within Canada.
And just from a research point of view, from a research point of view, we said that, remember, in the presentation, we said that the factors that affect people's hesitancy here may not be the same as even in another province. So it would be different even in another country. So we might not be able to, if somebody from outside were to, from outside of Canada was to participate, we may not be able to generalize it, it'd be potentially different reasons why people might be hesitant in their situation.
Thank you, Dr. Corby. And Mr. Alu Shagun, I hope the, the answers are satisfactory. And as Dr. Optin Hallen said, there may be other opportunities for other studies whereby people from outside of Canada could participate. If you sign up or will again on our, with our newsletter, we'll be able to share some of these studies, you know, from Dr. Hallen in the future. Another question for both of you, are there any potential benefits to participating in either study for patients with sickle cell disease that you could share at this time? I will start with Dr. Melanie Corby Allen, and then I will also let me, Dr. Optin Hallen also provide with respect to the Cerro Mac study. Thank you.
So participating in an individual's study is voluntary, but that's first of all. And generally, you, most, many research studies don't benefit you directly. Dr. Optin Hallen's study potentially is different. But in terms of this vaccine hesitancy study, there may not be direct benefits, but indirect benefit, because what the, the information we get from this study, we will be creating educational materials, depending on what we find, that will benefit everybody. So, do you, do you get what I'm, what I'm saying? So it might not be a direct benefit to you participating in this study, but the information we get would be helpful for the entire community. That's the intent of the study. So you may benefit from the information that is gathered and the education that we're able to provide afterwards.
And before Dr. Optin Hallen answered that question, I also want to add that by us gathering data that was, you know, specific to the sickle cell community, we also help us to be able to improve our advocacy with the government because we have numbers, we have information that is specific to our own community. So I think it's important that we participate and we encourage people to, you know, from our sickle cell and the larger black community to also participate. I will pass it to Dr. Optin Hallen to also answer the question with respect to the Cerro Mac study, and what is the benefit for the sickle cell patients, for them to participate in that study? Thank you.
Well, I think that there, you know, three potential benefits. But perhaps the most important benefit is that we get information that is beneficial to the sickle cell disease community as a whole. Then there's information that is beneficial to the pediatric sickle cell disease community, and then information that would be beneficial to the individual. To the individual, they would get information that tells how they have responded to the vaccines. And as such, might help to inform subsequent doses and the necessity for subsequent doses. So for example, one of the studies that we're running now in adults without sickle cell disease, as an anecdote, we had somebody email me yesterday and said, I just got my results, and it shows what my antibody levels are. What do you think? And, you know, the sort of levels that the person got were such that we were able to say, you know, although there's a lot we don't know about what levels of antibody, antibodies might be protective, in your particular case, it is so low that we recommend that you go out and get a booster.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hallen. We have another question here. Landy Daniel is asking, what specific tests do you intend to run on the blood samples? And also, can you tell us the actual volume of blood? Is it one ml, two ml, or one?
So, so we run two, two types of tests. One looks at the antibody levels. And this is like, if you had your hepatitis B vaccine and you want to check to see how you responded to that, that looks at antibodies. It's just that it's a different type of antibody. And the second looks at the white blood cells to see how well the white blood cells would fight against the COVID virus. The amount of blood that we take is approximately two teaspoonful, which is close to 10 mls. And that generally is really quite safe even for young babies.
So this individual is said that they are open to volunteering remotely. I'm guessing they, they were wondering, I'm, I'm not sure what that meant. Could it be that they wanted to give blood remotely? I'm not sure, but I don't know how they can volunteer.
What we can do, Lanri, is that we do have a mechanism whereby folks can be recruited remotely, and then we make arrangements to have them have their blood testing done at a life lab close to where they live. So they don't have to physically come to Sick Kids for, for the enrollment.
Wonderful. Thank you. One last question. Somebody's asking, does it mean that for them to be a part of these hesitancy study, they must already have participated in the Cerro Mac study? Dr. Corby?
No, that's, it's two completely separate studies, both involving people who were affected by sickle cell disease, particularly children, but two separate studies. And no, you can, you can participate in one, both are as, as you prefer.
Thank you. There is no more questions at this time. It seems that the community is satisfied with your, with your answers to their question. And I will ask if, at this point, if anybody have anything else to say, either from the panel or from the attendees, if there's any comment from anyone, I will have the floor open for about five minutes for that before we go to the poll.
I'm happy to make a couple of comments, since, you know, we're here, Lanri. And, and I think it's important for individuals with sickle cell disease to recognize to recognize and remember that um such persons, if they get COVID or have been identified as among those who are uh most likely to have severe COVID and bad outcomes from COVID. So it's really important that uh the sickle cell disease uh patients be uh prioritized for strategies that are aimed at getting information that uh uh optimizes their care. Um, because they are at risk of having severe outcomes from, from COVID. With respect to the vaccine information, uh, the, the justification for trying to get a better understanding of um why um how, how people respond to the vaccines, uh that is people with sickle cell disease come from, comes from a number of um directions. First, I made reference to the fact that people with sickle cell disease are more likely to have severe outcomes from COVID. But also um they uh have um uh less functional spleens or spleens that don't function. Um, uh, and this um increases their risk of a bacterial infection called pneumococcus. It so happens that um uh it, the pneumococcus infection is one of those that might surface among individuals who have had a severe COVID. So there, there are risk of, of getting a carcass before COVID. And if they get COVID, pneumococcus might surface and, and they um could be at increased risk um of that particular infection. Um, and then uh the uh other point that I'll make is that we don't know for sure um the extent to which not having uh the best functional spleen in the world influences uh how well one um makes antibodies uh to um respond to the, the COVID vaccines. And so all of this um uh points to the necessity to get information that will be helpful for the sickle cell disease population without having to generalize from populations of individuals who do not have sickle cell disease.
Very so well said, Dr. Hallen. Thank you so much. Um, I just want to recognize that we have one of our collaborators, Mr. Kabur Santi or so, uh, you know, as, as part of the attendees today. So thank you, Mr. Kabu, for being here. We're looking forward to collaborating with the African Canadian Social Development Council on this project. Without taking much more of your time, I would love to launch the poll. Please take about three, four minutes to please um complete this poll. And it will help us to better understand, you know, where you heard um uh uh um joining us from and your views and feedback around this study. Thank you very much. And um yep, we look forward to you participating. Thank you.
Can I make a few comments while we do the poll? Just.
Yes, please.
Just, we want to hear not only from people who are hesitant or have refused vaccines, but we also want to hear from people who have accepted vaccines because we can make inferences from both groups, which will help um he- help the healthcare system and advocate for what's right for our patients down the road. Um, so I just wanted to say, say that. So when you're telling people about this study, it's, we want to hear from everybody, not just people who are, who have been hesitant.
Thank you, Dr. Kirby. That is well said. So we'll give a few more minutes for the poll.
Also for, for people who are coming, bringing their little kids to sick kids. Um, the, the Ceromax study, we do it at the same time as their clinic blood work. So that saves on a, on a poll. So people are aware also. And there also are the studies that the parents have been participating in with or without sickle cell disease. Um, in terms of vaccine levels with the Ceromax study.
So I have somebody here, um, while we are doing the poll, there's somebody here who's asking if they are participating from within Ontario, what would be their choice? So Beatrice, if you can please expand more of what you mean by what is my choice? Um, choice, can you tell us choice in terms of what? Thank you.
Uh, Lonery, I think she might be referring to question number one because I had the same question as well.
Oh, okay. She's referring to the question. Okay.
So where is Ontario? Is Ontario eastern or where?
Okay, where are you joining us from tonight? Eastern Canada, um, central, western Canada? Northern Yukon. So there's um Ontario is not there. That's, that's, that's strange. So it would be, you, you know what? Uh. Um. So Nidi, what would we, where, where will Ontario be?
It will be central Canada.
Central? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you're from Ontario, then it will be central. Thank you.
One other thing to mention about this research involving um patients at either um a questionnaire or blood taking, anything like that. It's, it's confidential information and sometimes people are hesitant because they worry about confidentiality. When we have signed on to do research with involving uh our patients or all the public, whatever it is, we, we uh, we commit to confidentiality. So I would like to just reassure people that more, in any case, the questionnaire does not have your name as will not be analyzed as your name um with your name involved. So and when any publications that come from this or any information that's passed on to public health, for example, depending on what our findings are, which, because we would have to involve, would want to involve public health to get information out to the, to the general population, then that's all confidential. So just to be reassured about patient confidentiality, our participant confidentiality.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kirby. Very well said. Well, we are at the bar seven fifteen. I see people are still participating in the poll, so we give you a few more minutes to, but to participate. And if any question or comment comes to mind, please feel free to put either in the chart or in the, in the Q and A. We will, we will look at it and we will address it. We still have about fourteen minutes before we finish today's session. And thank you so much for staying till the end to um, you know, um, support today's town hall. Um. Okay, we have in the chat. Um, oh, thank you, Nidi. Yep. People can put their question in the, in the Q and A. Yeah, thank you for addressing that. We are so, so while we're doing this, I also want to mention that it's September. We have a lot of activities happening. September is the Cercella Awareness Month. Even though it's not a law in Canada, we'll still celebrate and we use the whole month to, you know, raise awareness and celebrate, you know, um, our peers and her families with sickle cell disease. So one of the activities that we have this month is uh a campaign that we're doing, the lesser told stories. You know, we find that when it comes to sickle cell disease, the focus most of the time is on the patient and also the parents. But what about the siblings? Sickle cell disease also have impact on the siblings. And I'm, I'm always saying everywhere I go, I am a sibling with individuals living with sickle cell disease. So we want to shine light on the siblings and let them know that we understand that they are also impacted by their loved ones, you know, uh, uh, um, disease and that they also matter to us. So we are shining light on siblings with sickle cell disease. We call it the lesser told stories of siblings with sickle cell disease. So if you are a sibling, please be a part of the campaign and you can reach out to Nidi. Nidi, can you put your email address in the chat box so people can know? They can reach out to you if they would like to share their sibling stories around sickle cell disease. It's very important. We also have on September twenty-four, a webinar on cognitive challenges in black community as well as in children and youth with sickle cell disease. We find that um cognitive challenges is kind of disproportionate in the black community versus other ethnic groups and we need to address it. And also we know that in children with sickle cell disease could also due to perhaps silent stroke and other issues also have cognitive challenges. So we're bringing that to you on September twenty-four. Please register for that. And I'm sure you must have seen all over the place a poster for this year's Cercel Summit. It's happening on November four and November five. There's information on our website. If you receive our newsletter, you will also receive information, register and widely disseminate. We thank you again and we look forward to having you participate in all these wonderful sessions that we have, both in September and at other times. Thank you so much. Um, is something here from somebody to Dr. Optin? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Laura, I'm happy to answer that question. Um, no, the, 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 there's the, the issue around um the spleen is, is unique to sickle cell disease. Um, uh, but for the most part, there, there's some other conditions um where your spleen might not function or it might be removed. Um, but in the case of sickle cell disease, Dr. Kirby and Dr. Williams can speak to this. Um, essentially what happens is that the spleen shrivels uh when, and then disappears in terms of um, you know, uh, it, its presence. Um, and they, uh, they go through a process called, you know, um autosplentectomy um and then they lose the function of the spleen. Um, uh, it's not related to uh infections or um any uh repeated exposures to infections um outside of the setting of sickle cell disease. It's unique to sickle cell disease. I don't know if um Dr. Kirby and Dr. Williams want to say anything more about that. But it's really important because um of people with um uh uh this inability of your spleen to protect you from certain infections are at risk of having severe um problems if they encounter certain types of bacterial infections, including one called pneumococcus. And so that reason why the sickle cell disease teams will talk to the uh, uh, families about um uh seeking medical attention. If you have a fever, don't stay home if you have a fever. And also ensuring that the kids are vaccinated against pneumococcus and some other types of bacterial infections.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ertin Allen. Dr. Susan Williams or Dr. Melanie Corby, any addition to that?
The whole reason we have newborn screening is because we want to identify babies from very young because these severe, this severe risk of infection and some infections can be fatal. Um, we can, if we identify early, we can get the kids vaccinated. There was a time from early, there was a time when um many of these special vaccines we gave to sickle cell disease, we would only, we would give in the clinic. Now every, all children are getting those vaccines. But the additional thing that knowing you have sickle cell disease from early in life is that we start preventative antibiotics from early in life until the first five years of life because the risk is highest under the age of five. And we, we don't want to uh have uh really bad outcomes for our, for our children. So that's the whole reason, one of the big reasons to doing newborn screening is to protect these kids from these uh infections, which are very serious.
Thank you very much, Dr. Corby Hallen. With, I don't think we have any more questions. I'd like to thank everyone again. Dr. Susan Williams, welcome. I know you joined us a little bit late, but welcome. And we have Thea, also Thea Campbell. He's a social worker. Thank you so much for joining. I'd like to thank everyone for your time this evening. Thank you, Dr. Hopton Hallen and Dr. Melanie Corby Hallen for the, the amazing presentations and we look forward to the, the community, you know, participating, asking questions, being engaged on both the Ceromax study and the vaccine hesitancy study. Like I'd mentioned earlier, we need to have data for our own community. And this is one of the ways to start to build those data. It will help us in advocacy and in ensuring that the government recognize, you know, when it comes to sickle cell disease. So thank you again for being part of this. We appreciate you. And we wish everyone a wonderful evening. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank, thanks everyone for joining. Thank you.
Thank you.